We're good. Okay. Recording? Okay. All right. Thank you, everybody, for your attendance this evening. Let me call this first meeting in our lineup of three meetings this evening to order for the record. This is a special meeting. So that I have the right one. A special Board of Finance City Council Board of Education meeting. Today, for the record, today is Tuesday, April 29, 2025. We are in the City Hall Auditorium. For the record, it is now 5:34 PM. And I want to read into the record who is in attendance for the respective boards. So for our Board of Finance, we have Board of Finance member Wendy Trab, participating via Zoom, Lorraine Pesky in person, Jim Ray in person, Christopher Anderson, participating via Zoom, and Chris Bayes participating via Zoom. That is a quorum of that board. For the City Council, we have attending in person Stephen Iveyne, Anne Rouette, Paul Cavanero, and Molly Spino. And I think, did I see Drake was on Zoom? And Drake Waldron is on Zoom. And now I need my glasses so I can go around the room. So participating for the Board of Education, we have Susan DePretis, Gary Ucalito. He's the only one that isn't here. So for the record, everyone except for Ed Corey. Thank you, Susan. All right. So that's a quorum of each of the boards. Before we get into the agenda, could we kindly stand and pledge the flag? Okay. Because it is a special meeting, and we did not allow for public comment. We're going to jump right into the agenda. And the, this is a single item agenda. I shouldn't say agenda. This is a single focus on Internal Service Fund activity since June 30 of 2024 in discussion regarding the education's health insurance coverage. So I'm going to start this meeting. And could you? It's the Internal Service Fund PowerPoint presentation. And I'll walk through these slides quickly because I think that they do speak for themselves. However, it's always helpful to have a little bit of narrative. So first, as I state, the purpose of the meeting is to review the activity in the Internal Service Fund and to determine the respective proportional shares of that account. To do this, I really kind of feel we have to start with how the contributions are determined and how the reserves are allocated. So the next slide, please. So first, because we are discussing a two years or a combination of two years of funding into this reserve, I wanted to revisit how the contributions were calculated. The annual required contribution is calculated, as has been the practice of the City and the Board of Education for the past 25 years using a utilization report, stop-loss insurance, prescription rebates, insurance administration costs, and member or contract census numbers. These are all reviewed jointly with administration on the Board of Education side, administration on the City side, our consultant, and our insurance provider. Our consultant actuary then helps to establish an annual cost projection based on historical experience in the account and projections and trends in medical care. Those contributions are then split between the Board of Education and the City proportionally based on two items, based on census and based on utilization. So as you can see in FY '24, the Board of Education's share of this account, you see the letter, or excuse me, the memo that went from the comptroller at the time to the business director at the time, calling for a total renewal of $13,930,544.69. The Board of Education has always historically paid those in 10 payments commencing in August of 2020, August of each year. Next slide, please. All right. So the same thing with FY '25. Utilizing the same methodology, you could see on the insurance, health insurance funding document on the left side, we show the calculations broken down by percentage to the respective departments. And also, you'll see down in the bottom half of this paper, a list of the meeting dates. Those are the dates that the Board of Education and the City met to discuss utilization, experience, and census so that those numbers could be crunched and used to make the projections. This result, this year resulted in a contribution to be made by the Board of Education in the amount of $14,645,019.78. Again, 10 monthly installments were to be made into the Internal Service Fund. These are the gross costs for insurance. Next slide, please. On May 10 of 2024, through the board chair, we received, our comptroller received an email informing him, it was John Monks at the time, that the Board of Education did not intend to make its final installment. They had a rationale that they were utilizing the payment of premium cost shares that were paid into the general fund to net out the expenses and felt that they had fulfilled their obligation. Next slide, please. On June 21, the City Boards, that would be the City Council and the Board of Finance, had a couple of joint meetings to discuss what do we do if the fund, Internal Service Fund, is not adequately funded? You know, what does this mean to ensure the ongoing payment of medical claims? And after those meetings on June 21, 2024, a demand letter was issued to the Board of Education together with a proposed resolution. And in response to that demand letter, the City received a response from the Board of Education confirming that the Board of Ed had accepted the terms of the resolution, and they would be parting ways with the Internal Service Fund. I would add that in between the May meeting, the May email informing the City that that final installment was not going to be made and this demand letter, we did also receive an email on June 4 from the Board of Education requesting that the City make no additional or no further transfers out of that fund until we had a complete accounting of what's in it, what the proportional shares are. And so we essentially froze any transfers out of that account as per the Board of Education's request, with the exception of the required payments for medical, dental, and vision claims. All right. Next slide, please. So the task at hand was to start to figure out or calculate the Board of Education's share of the Internal Service Fund reserves. And we begin with the June 30, 2024 audited self-insurance fund balance. As you can see, that is highlighted here as $9,953,417. That again is the audited balance. So I would note, before we go to the next screen, that this $9,953,417 reflects medical, dental, and vision claims paid out on behalf of the Board of Education employees during the month of June. And it does, it is the balance that reflects the City's full contribution to the fund, but only nine payments from the Board of Education. So that 10th payment is not included in this $9 million number, almost $10 million number. Next slide, please. So obviously, you know, we want to go back and look at, you know, what was the methodology for determining the respective proportional contributions? Again, those were based on the historical experience. That is actually, we looked at 54, a 54-month look back on the experience. The claims that were paid, each one of those claims are tracked not only by those individuals for whom the claim was submitted, but by their employer. So for Board of Education employees and for City employees, the census is collected. The data is distilled into a percentage share. And in this situation where we're trying to determine what is fair when you're looking at the June 30, 2024 balance, we thought if we looked back at a five-year history of those contributions, that, and then took the average contribution over those five years, that it would bring us to a fairly close percentage split. So on this page, and this document also, by the way, has been provided to the Board of Education in the past. This is an ongoing record of what we do for insurance adoption. But as you can see, starting with 2020, we were, the Board of Education was contributing 64.49%. In 2021, 62.36%. In '22, 62.6%. '23, 64.3%. '24, 64.12. When we took the average, the five-year average, it comes out to 63.58% being contributed by the Board of Education and 36.42% being contributed by the Board of, by City. Next slide, please. So this is where we have to do the, you know, those adjustments, you know, based on what the impact would be if all payments had been made, if the transfers that were supposed to come out of that account were done on a timely basis. So, and this exercise is to bring us to what is that adjusted reserve balance that then can be split 36.42% and 63.58 cents? So again, using the audited fund balance of 630, 2024, we're at $9,953,417. If the 10th payment had been made by the Board of Education, that would have increased that fund balance. If the $200,000 transfer out had been affected, the balance in the fund would be $11,146,962. There is one more adjustment that we needed to make because, again, we're looking at this five-year look back. In the year 2020, the budgets were adopted. Keep in mind, this is the pandemic year. And after the budget decisions had been made, the Board of Education came to the Board of Finance and said, asked the Board of Finance for authority to reduce their funding percentage from 105% to 100%. And the Board of Finance agreed. It was about $670,000 that the Board of Education could then move or retain in their operating budget. However, the City did not do the same. They, the City did, especially because it was a response to a pandemic, the City maintained its 105% contribution. So we feel, again, looking to make sure that everything is equal, that this is a reduction that we would have to make to reflect the true percentage shares at 36.42 and 63.58. That results in an ending fund balance of $10,816,350. 36.42% of that belonging to the City, that's $3,939,196, and $6,877, or 63.58% belonging to the Board of Education. Next slide, please. So, I mean, obviously, we've reflected that 10th payment having been made, but it hasn't, it hasn't been made. So now this is where against the 64 point, 63.58%, we now then have to start showing what are those expenses that are the responsibility of the Board of Education or reflect expenses that were claims that were expensed out of this account for Board of Education employees? So we're going to start with the FY '24 activity. The first line item is the FY '24 OPEB contribution, which was due from the Board of Education. This is an annual obligation per policy that was adopted. It's a $50,000 annual operating expense that is supposed to be paid, $17,000 from the Board of Ed and $33,000 from the City. So that $17,000 was not made in FY '24. The next line is the FY '24 10th payment, which is due from the Board of Education. You'll recall on the screen earlier, we're giving credit for that 10th payment so that it would reflect a true 34 and change, 36 and change, 63 and change. That, that 10th payment is $1,393,545. Fiscal year '24 premium cost share. And these, by the way, are all consistent with the resolution. Fiscal year '24 premium cost share that was withheld from the BOE wages for insurance coverage from 5/15/24 through 6/30/24 is $273,585. Fiscal year '25, employee, medical, dental, and vision claims that were received and paid as of 9/30/2024. Those are the actual bills for medical care, dental expenses, and vision. Then we jump into the fiscal year '25. The employee, medical, dental, vision claims. These are, again, those claims that were received and paid out of the Internal Service Fund for medical care, dental, and vision care. These bills were received. The treatment occurred prior to October 1, but we received the bill after October 1. These are the IBNR claims. And we are at $863,242. And they're still trickling in. We are still getting, you know, small amounts. We were worried the, when we were reviewing these on a monthly basis with our healthcare team, you know, we were worried, are these the large claims, you know, over $50,000 or over $250,000 that take longer for the insurance reps to review? But we have been assured that, you know, these are trickling in. I think last week it was another $5,000 that came in for dental care. So as of, this 863,242 was as of?
March 31st.
March 31st. All right. Staying with the FY '25, the premium cost shares that were withheld from the Board of Education employees' wages for insurance coverage from 7/1/24 through 9/30/24, keeping in mind those insurance claims were paid out of the Internal Service Fund. Those premium cost shares totaled $358,657. The FY '25 administration fees, these are the fees that are paid to Cigna, is the insurer, for processing those claims. Every time our employees go to a doctor, a dentist, or an eye doctor, a bill is generated and it is submitted, and Cigna vets the claim and submits it to the City for payment. So administration fees, stop-loss insurance coverage from 7/1/2024 through 4/30/2025 is $840,656. The COBRA reimbursement for an invoice that was paid out of the fund for the BOE share of COBRA is $1,840. And then the fiscal year '25 OPEB annual contribution due from the Board of Education is $17,000. As you can see, those total charges are $7,742,296 against an adjusted fund balance available to pay those bills, $6,877,154, leaving a balance due of, from the Board of Education of $865,142. Next slide, please. So, you know, as we know, when the Board of Education made the decision that it did not want to continue participation in the Internal Service Fund, and those insurance budgeted line items in the Board of Education's budgets are reflected in account or line 5210. I know for FY '25, it is $12,535,186. This budgeted amount is net of the $2,123,130 in premium costs that they, that are being retained by the Board of Education. And according to the March 31, 2025 Budget Performance Report, that line item has a balance of $4,836,483 in it. So that is where we are with the Internal Service Fund. And I'm going to open the floor for questions.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yeah.
Thank you for putting the worksheet together. We did expect it in January, as you know.
Yeah.
But, and we've also had our attorneys involved since the beginning. So we're going to continue to keep them involved, have them take a look at everything before we commit.
Okay.
Either way.
Yeah. Absolutely.
I don't have any questions. Is anybody else on the board?
Having been on this board for a long time, and every year the discussion came up about insurance. And every, every year, the Board of Education since day one asked, why don't we get bids? How do we not get bids? You've asked us, did we get bids for our insurance? The City's never gotten bids. What kind of business can move forward with a $30 million insurance fund? With fees, we don't know what make up those fees. But every time, every year, and it's not, I will say it's not, to my as well, it's past practice, it goes back to prior administrations. But we've, we met, and we were supposed to have a commission or a committee meeting. The problem was, we're 65%. The City's 35. I think Mrs. Spino was on the board at the time. But the committee was set up with eight city employees, eight city members, and two Board of Ed members. Why would we even show up? It's theater. And I've lived in this town a long time. It should be no surprise to anybody why this is an issue because I have never seen any data backing up the numbers you give us. We've asked. We have no data on who received the care, how they got to this. I know how we got to the 64%, which is the number of employees. But there's no data on who you paid and what you paid. There's never been documentation that I'm familiar with. Now, you can give it to us tonight, but this came to us yesterday. But there is legal involvement. So we've heard our side, you've heard your side, and it will continue. But if any council, the Board of Finance, expects the Board of Ed to live with a 1.4% increase on average, when you approve, you approve increases of three times that and live in the dark about how you get your budgets from Cigna, I don't know if they're right. I bid everything out to the penny. And my friend next to me here, he's in the same business of bidding. We bid. I'm sure the state bids. My son gets bids all the time. How can the City not bid? I don't care what kind of past practice it is. And I don't understand why the Democrats on this council don't question it. That's another thing that really bothers the hell out of me. But it's been eight, nine years, and I'm not blaming the mayor. It's past practice. I blame the council and the Board of Finance for not questioning. Why don't we get bids? And why is this past practice? It doesn't make sense that there's no transparency because I have not seen it. So anyway, if the council asks questions because I've been missing, I work in Maine, I've seen a lot of the meetings, but there's been no questions about how you get these mon, how much you pay, who you pay to. Is it fair value? I don't know. Is it fair value? Can you honestly tell us it's fair value? I don't think anybody here can. A million four in fees? Is that fair value? You questioned what we were doing with our insurance bids. Answer the questions for us someday. Let us know. But other than that, you know, we're going to work toward a solution. I hope it's not up to me. We'll get there.
Yeah. And I think that resolution has already been enacted. You know, the Board of Education has separated from the Internal Service Fund. But I would just like to answer the question. Every year, at least for the past 12 years, these numbers were reviewed with the administration of the Board of Education. Every year. No. Every year, every year, there were meetings, and we have a complete record of the dates that we met, whether it was Zoom, whether it was in person, and who in the team was available. So I do just want to make sure that that isn't left hanging. But yeah. Okay. I get, I hear you. All right. If there are no questions.
Mayor, I have a question.
Okay. So that sounded like Wendy Trab. So Mrs. Trab, you have a question?
Yeah. Mentioned 4.8 million left in the Board of Ed as of March. There are, there's quite a few dollars in encumbrances. Is that, I guess my question on that is that 4.8 million, are there still invoices need to be paid out of that 4.8 million? I guess I don't know what the encumbrance part of that encompasses and what the 4.8 million balance encompasses. Is any of that going to be left? Or do they still need to pay premiums for the next three months?
So, did you hear the question? I know her voice was very soft. Her question was on the last page, when we talk about the line item where the Board of Education budgets for its insurance, and the 3/31/2025 budget report reflected a $4.8 million balance on hand. And the question was, are there additional invoices being charged against that balance? Because a portion of the account is already encumbered, but the balance of it is left as a balance on hand.
So we can definitely answer that, Donna or I, but I don't know what that has to do with the Internal Service Fund at all. But that would be more of a budgetary question if we're leading into the next meeting. But basically, you nodded your head, Mayor. There are still bills coming in, and there are still things that need to be paid, just as you alluded to earlier. There are bills coming in, right? Trickling in was the word you used, I believe. So there are bills coming in that aren't trickling in that we need to clear up before June 30 deadline, and Donna and the team have been working on that. So the number right there is not the firm number as of now. Donna, you have anything to add?
Were you able to hear that? Because I think also they're sharing microphones, and I'm not sure that it projected well. Did you hear the answer?
Yes, and I apologize. I'm up to my highest volume, so I don't know why it's not working. And I appreciate that answer. And perhaps it will be budgetary, but because it was included in your presentation was the only reason I was asking if that number was a solid number or not. But thank you.
And I would say that the only reason that is in this presentation is if there is an 800 an $865,000 fee due, balance due back into the Internal Service Fund, I was just trying to identify where their insurance is budgeted.
And if I may on that, and that's what I think Board Chair DePretis was referring to, your document shows that, our document actually shows that you owe us $445,000. So that's why it's litigated with the attorneys at this point. And, you know, I think when you look at the resolution, and you look at the columns, and you go through it line by line, I think it's clear from whichever position you'd like to take. But, you know, you're saying one number, and we respect that, but our number is actually 445 back to the Board of Education. So at this point, since it's been litigated from the inception, it's the best way to go about it, this way there's no gray area here.
Sure.
It's gone by the joint resolution, line by line, using your lines, actually, that you provided last evening. So the lines are the same, and the number comes out very different. So I think at this point, you know, it's, we're not going to resolve anything until the lawyers look at it. So, you know, that's where the discrepancy lies. I mean, to be 1.2 million apart is very different.
Okay. I appreciate that. Okay.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yeah. Chris Vegas has a question.
So, you know, I hear a lot of talking in regards to this Internal Service Fund, I think, number one, that we're talking about bids that aren't relevant to this conversation. We don't, we can't obviously comment, because it's a legal matter, so I don't want to go into it. But there's been some discrepancies on the board's side with their insurance gathering and their, the bids they receive for the private, so I just want that to be noted for the record. That's all.
Can we just not interrupt him?
No, he's not, he's making a false statement.
Let him finish.
No.
All right, so, excuse me. All right, so as the chair.
He's making a false statement.
Like you have.
It was litigated, I have not.
So, excuse me.
How dare you!
Excuse me, I, I'm going to call a point of order here. So Mr. Vegas, if you want to finish your point, and then Mrs. DePretis has a response.
No, I was just saying, for the record, there were some questions about the bid process on their side during this insurance thing. Whether those have been resolved or not, sure, but I just wanted it to be noted for the record, that's all. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Oliver's question, or his response, this was litigated, and we won the litigation. I asked Mr. Oliver, you've been laughing, and you've been rolling your eyes, and you've been shaking your head. Could you tell me what you think is wrong here that the judge has made a mistake on, rather than just throwing comments out? It would make for a more civil, you know, discussion, rather than this petty, you know?
I'm sorry, point of order. What, what was litigated and what judge decision was made?
I'll let them answer the question.
In the different hearings that were, took place, and all the complaints that have been filed against the Board of Education, we already know that we didn't violate anything in going and retaining Brown and Brown. So for Chris to bring it up and state that we're doing things either illegally or otherwise is not appropriate.
Okay.
And that, that wasn't my statement, I said there were questions surrounding the bids.
Again, point of order, just point of order.
We should revisit that.
All right, so that does not mean it's been litigated, and there was no judge order on that, just so that there is a clear record.
Commission.
There was a commission? What commission?
Where did you testify, where did you testify in Hartford recently? What was that?
That is an arbitration on the administrator's contract?
No, no, not that one, there was another couple of different hearings that were, the FOI hearings, I'm sorry, the FOI hearings.
That is.
I'm sorry.
I believe, and I can, I can help for the point of order, I can help for the point of order.
So there were Freedom of Information Commission hearing, the mayor did not.
I thought we just had that same conversation, but that's okay. There have been several Freedom of Information requests, and we have obliged to every single one. And Attorney Magistrally, I think what he was referring to was, he actually came up to the FOI hearing, just as I was. And I think there has been resolutions in terms of, we're moving forward with all of the documentation, and some of the complaints actually have been dropped by the city. The last one is because we have been providing the information, and it is still forthcoming. And Attorney Magistrally's last email, he received another, I believe, almost 5,000 documents. So there is nothing that we are hiding. So as a point of order and for clarity, that's the FOI commission, that's what we're doing, we're providing any information that's been asked, and that's actually what you testified to, and that's what the hearing officer said, we would agree to just keep moving with the process and giving the documents as they come forward. So that's, I just wanted, I'm with you, Mayor, from a point of order perspective, that's actually what transpired.
So the mayor didn't testify at any Freedom of Information Commission hearing, she wasn't there, and there was only one hearing, there was only one Freedom of Information Commission hearing, that matter has not been concluded, the Freedom of Information Commission has not rendered any decision, that hearing actually is continued to May 19. There has been no decision by the Freedom of Information Commission on anything. So you saying that there was a commission and there was litigation, and you won, that's not true. What happened was, of the four complaints that I filed, I withdrew several of them.
Yes.
Not admitting that, that the Board of Education did anything right or wrong, and none of that was about the process with Brown and Brown, it's simply a document request. So there was never litigated, the way, you know, the, the way that you entered into the agreement with Brown and Brown, and now with Anthem, none of that's been litigated, and there's been no decision.
Well, because there was nothing wrong.
And there's been no decision that what you did was proper. And that wasn't what the Freedom of Information Commission was about.
Right.
No, it's not, but I, that I was referring to, whichever hearing it was, you testified at something, and maybe it was the admin.
It was the admin.
A contract, okay.
But Chris referenced.
I thought it was one of.
Yeah, that's right.
I think Chris referenced the illegal meeting, and I think that's what he was referencing. And I would, I think Chris was referencing an illegal meeting.
That, that complaint I ended up withdrawing, there was never a hearing.
I guess Chris didn't know that.
Excuse me?
Chris must not have known that, I guess.
I don't know what Mr. Beas knew or didn't know.
That's what I was, I was.
But there was never a decision by the Freedom of Information Commission on that, I voluntarily withdrew. I know. Which is neither here nor there.
You must admit that, you must admit it probably wasn't an illegal meeting. Maybe publicly you can state, it doesn't seem as if it was an illegal meeting, so the board can get rid of that stain, like I referred to theater again.
I don't agree, and I, and I, that as well.
Well, if we're going to talk about illegal meetings, we could talk about some that were held over on Water Street, but I'm not going to.
So again, point of order, because I think the, the discussion item on the table is about insurance, not about FOI commission or administration.
Your Board of Finance member brought it up.
Okay, all right. So I want to continue in the discussions on the health insurance activity. So if you want to pull up the second PowerPoint presentation. This is in response to a request that has come to me from a number of city council members. And I'm going to have to shoot from my hip on this, because it was something that we were working on in the last two days. So as we've established, you know, the decision for the Board of Education, the decision to break away from the Internal Service Fund, which you have the right to do, you can do that, you've done that. And moving forward, you'll budget according to what you get billed from your insurance companies, and the city will continue to use the Internal Service Fund for purposes of providing health benefits for our employees. However, the question that I kept getting is, based on the contract that the Board of Education signed, regardless of how that contract came about, regardless of a bid process or RFPs, regardless, there is a contract that was signed, and I'm using just the numbers from that contract. So if we can go to the next slide, please. I'm just going to gloss over this thing, I just wanted to just remind those council members that year over year, again, because I always kept that spreadsheet, you know, what were the increases for medical, prescription, dental, and vision coverage for the Board of Education employees? This goes back, those five years that I talked about earlier, and you can see that of the five years, in three of those years, we did experience a decrease in those costs. The outlier in this five-year period of time is FY21. Now, you know that FY21 budget is adopted in May or June of 2020, we were absolutely full-blown pandemic. And the insurance companies across the board, fully insured, self-insured, all insurance companies, were hedging their bets, forecasting, trying to forecast what the impact was going to be, and that is the outlier year where you saw, where we saw a 12% increase in the premiums on that year. The following years, the following two years, you could see those premiums came back down. The average increase over the five-year period of time was 2.39% over a five-year period of time. Next slide, please. So I know the discussion about FOI, I'm reluctant to even say the word out loud, because I don't want to open the gates again, on FOI commission complaints and, you know, and progress towards fulfilling those FOI requests. But one of the early documents that was provided to the city in one of our first FOI requests was this document. This is an insurance bid summary. The request was for, you know, the RFP and all of the bid documents that were submitted. What we learned when we received this document is that the board never received the bid documents, but did receive this summary sheet, and this was the summary sheet that was reviewed when the, when the bid was awarded. Next slide, please. So as you heard the discussion on, you know, our FOI, you heard Superintendent Wilson say, you know, it's a lot of documents, we're, you know, we're working our way through providing them. On the, one of the requests, I believe it was a September FOI request for the contract with, it was a request of September 17, 2024, was for the contract with Anthem. And those are one of the documents that we were told, you know, you have everything. And then in February of 2025, the end of February of 2025, we received the assumptions and conditions document, the services, a service including a buy-up option document, the featured plans and rates document that itemized what the, what the insurance coverage was going to cost from October 1, 2024 through June 30, 2026. And all of these documents had in fact been signed by the superintendent on September 10 of 2024. I did, in the, for the council and the Board of Finance that were requesting this information, in your paper copy of this slide deck, I do, I did include those documents that were provided to us on February 25. Next slide, please. So using the contract that was signed by the superintendent, and the breakdown for each of these respective coverages is contained in the document on several pages, I distilled this to one spreadsheet to show you what those insurance costs are, how they're broken out by employee counts, what the monthly rate is, and then did an extrapolation here showing the nine-month period ending 6/30/2025, which is a total of $10,793,313 for medical coverage. Keep in mind, this is just the medical coverage. And then for the full year, beginning 7/1/25 through 6/30/26, the total coverage based on the contract and these counts is $14,391,083. Again, that is in this contract that was provided to us on February 25. Next slide, please. So for those board members that were asking for, you know, the, a simple calculation, is the insurance that the Board of Education negotiated as good, the cost, excuse me, in line with the cost for the same coverage in the Internal Service Fund. It's a good question for a lot of reasons. If the Board of Education is actually, in fact, getting insurance cheaper, is this something we should be looking at? If that's not the case, we certainly want to know that, for the very reasons that the board has, you know, has brought here today. You know, these are decisions that the respective boards have to make, because all of these costs, all except for those premium cost shares, are covered by the taxpayers. So I did this exercise, again, using the contract costs as contained in the document signed by Superintendent Wilson, for the respective groups of coverage. And then adding in the Anthem dental and vision, which is, which was reported on the bid summary document. And the total cost for the nine-month period of time ending 6/30/2025 is $11,383,297. The cost for the year 7/1/25 through 6/30/26, which is a 12-month period of time, is $15,139,908. For purposes of doing this comparison that the board was asking me to do, I annualized the nine-month period of time, and that cost, if, if that insurance plan had been put in place on July 1, would have been $15,117,729 in the first year, against the cost of health benefits that were being provided through the Internal Service Fund in year one, which is the FY25 contribution that was calculated, $14,654,1978, which means the Board of Education's insurance plan was actually $463,709.55 more expensive than the Internal Service Fund. And I will get to the premium cost share and the, a one-time premium adjustment. But apples to apples, the cost of the insurance negotiated in the first year is $463,000 more expensive than the Internal Service Fund. It's a little bit harder to look at what the second year is, because the Board of Education did lack down that second year when they negotiated 21 months. But again, going back to that, you know, what's the five-year average of increases? I did the, the 14, 654,19, that we are, that was billed for FY25, and I increased that by 2.39%, and that cost comes out to be $15,4,250, which is 130, again, the Board of Education's insurance is about $135,000 more than the Internal Service Fund option. Next slide. This is where the, the accounting practices come into play. So on this page, again, I'm looking at the, this is just, this is, I'm sorry, this is both years. The Anthem charges for nine months is in column one, $11,383,297. This is both the medical and the dental and vision. There is an email in the FOI documents that Sue DePretis emailed to some board members, I think board leadership, where she states that she negotiated a one-time premium credit of $500,000, which explains, in this summary, this bid summary document, we noticed in that first column, there was this random, just one, one insurer provided a premium credit. So, so there is a premium credit in year one, $500,000. And then, of course, the BOE retaining all of the employee premium cost shares to net their insurance costs. to net their insurance costs. So the net cost for the nine-month term, nine months, is $8,761,67. And then in year two, it's the $15,139. And then netting, I believe their premium cost share percentages went up in your contract negotiations. So it looks like your premium cost shares are $2.4 million. And the net cost, net of premiums, is $12,698,309. You know, and this is an accounting methodology that does distort the actual cost of insurance. And I know this is something that the Board of Education was asking of the city for decades. When I was on the Board of Education, we were asking to budget net. But back in 2002, there was a forensic audit done by an auditing firm. And the recommendation was that we would not be budgeting net of revenues. And that became the practice for the next 23 years. So, so when you're asking, why is it that their insurance is so much lower than ours? It is this negotiated premium credit and the use of the premium cost shares that reduces those costs. For budgeting purposes, it does not, in fact, reduce the cost of the insurance. Any questions on that? Councilman Kavanaugh?
Yeah, I have quite a bit to say before we go. Does the Board of Ed dispute any of these numbers provided right here?
This is the first time we're seeing this doc, this presentation, so I can't comment, Paul. I don't, we have to look at it. And again, like I said earlier, we've been involved, our attorneys have been involved since the beginning. We didn't know we were getting this in-depth to this conversation, or we would have had our attorneys present. They're not here. So we're not, and we're not prepared to comment on what's in here.
Why, well, just, okay, just for my edification, why are we getting, these are accounting discussions.
I just, I don't know.
Why are we bringing attorneys to attorney? Why are we bringing attorneys?
It's the Internal Service Fund, Paul. And we've been involved with, they've been involved since the beginning. And we're not going to comment on something that we haven't checked the numbers against what was sent in. I'm not, we're not going to comment on it. I'm sorry. We're not doing that off the cuff.
And if I may, this is not the Internal Service Fund.
Why is that funny?
Can you dispute, can you dispute our number?
Again, I'm going to do a point of order.
No matter what we're doing.
I'm calling a point of order. We're trying to be civil to each other here. Just for clarification, this is not the Internal Service Fund. This is the contract that was signed by the superintendent on September 10.
Okay, again, we just saw it tonight, and I can't comment.
With all due respect, there was no, there's no need to take any action on any of this. This was just a request that the council members and a couple of the Board of Finance members asked me to prepare. And that's, yeah.
That's great. But Paul asked if we agreed with the numbers, and I can't say I agree or disagree.
I don't think we'll argue against the contract. But the contract, I mean, my point, we can't answer that question because there have been a whole 15 pages of numbers. He's a numbers guy. He is a numbers guy. I'm sure by the next meeting, if things are, they can be answered. But you have the contract.
I'm all, I'm very much in support of getting your numbers people and the city's numbers people to sit together as numbers people and go through this so we don't have to bring attorneys in and pay the additional cost, which only obfuscates so much of this process as we all know from different aspects of our life.
But Paul, you know this has been a ten year.
Do a level setting. We've got 30, what, 35 people here around this table and on Zoom trying to work out, okay, all decision makers for the city of Torrington try to come to a simple coherent evaluation of, the Board of Education went out unilaterally. I'm not going to dispute that. You have the right to do that, to get your own insurance. What I want to know as a city councilman, ultimately has to pass or not pass the city budget as my fellow councilmen do, what I want to know is the following. Has the city been provided with this new contract, the full terms of the new contract that you signed? I'm not disputing that you have the absolute right to go out and negotiate it. Has that information, the full and complete contract been forwarded to the city?
I'll answer that. If I, yeah. So yes, the, well, I assume this is the full contract. This is what was provided to us on February 25 through the board's attorney, Jessica Ritter. It's the, it's attached to the paper copy of this PowerPoint document. It is entitled, it is entitled "Your Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield Proposal Packet."
So is the city, and it's, is the city comfortable with the fact that they are seeing now the complete Anthem contract? Okay, so now you can.
I believe so, yes.
Okay, so now you can parse it, and you can look at these numbers. And you've come up with a set of numbers that says you're actually, you're actually going to cost the city more to do this. You'll review it and come back and argue, you're either doing better or worse, okay? What I would like to leave this meeting here today with, an understanding with reasonable Board of Education members and reasonable city council and Board of Finance people, that the city, you have, the Board of Education absolutely has the right to make its own decisions with the money that is given to them to do as they will. The city has the right to request and receive any and all documents for how that money is spent in a timely fashion without needing to go through attorneys, FOI requests, and multiple, multiple discussions, okay? We have too many problems in this city to be playing these kinds of little childish adolescent games with information, holding and distributing in pieces and parts. We got to stop this now. So having said that, you, what is the next step now? You will review these numbers, Board of Education?
The numbers people.
Here, here's where I'm going. If this is cost, if this ends up actually costing us more money, that will affect how I vote, and I have no doubt that will affect how the Board of Finance votes on the overall budget. So you guys need to digest this quickly and come back and essentially, I'm thinking, disprove what these numbers are showing the city.
So if I may, we don't disagree. And to Board Member Ukuleido's point, we will 100% digest and reaffirm the numbers and 100% have our support behind them and be able to articulate our position on that. However, to extrapolate the 25, 26, if we were to stay with the city, we don't know what that rate would have been. So that number on that previous slide, to say we're 135,000, I believe, was the number on the previous slide, that's fictitious at best. So I believe our number is a lot more accurate in terms of getting a locked-in 21-month rate, which is really hard to do in the insurance industry. So we've really done our homework for the taxpayers and for the city members and for all of you here. So while I'm not agreeing or disagreeing, I'm saying if we were to stay with the city, that number would have been way higher. So for us to go out and to lock in a 21-month rate and to do our due diligence, as you said, and to come together as a team and to really support all of the taxpayers, that's exactly what we did here. So that number of us going 135, it's actually way in the plus direction to save the city taxpayers' dollars. So I understand your question, and we will get back to you on it. But I want to make a point that that 25, 26 from the city number is erroneous at this point because it wouldn't, it didn't impact us. So our number, which is a real number, and if we go just on the 135, I can tell you it's going to tip the scales in the plus favor, which is in plus favor for the taxpayers.
I look forward to that because if, in fact, you have found a better way to skin the cat insurance-wise, I would like to apply those same, that same process to our city employees. So we all, it's a win-win for everybody. Isn't that what we all want? And just my final point, and this is between me and Mr. Ukuleido, who I have a lot of respect for and I know. To your point about the city never going out to bid, what was, how many bids did you put out for the busing contract this year?
I think, I don't know this year. Jeff would know.
Every five years they go out.
Oh, okay, okay.
Every three to five years, actually, depending on the contract length. And then we are obviously, by a number of people, bid that contract, which, now, as I, we all, districts around the state tend to face, which are a number of bids that are actually.
All right, fair enough.
Well, above and beyond that, I think maybe Mrs. Spino can help, maybe not. But when I first got on the board, I asked that question. And the problem was only one bidder would show up. And I think that continues, and we know who the bidder is. And I'm not going to, I'm not going to accuse any bus companies of colluding in any way, but nobody else wants the bid.
Okay, and I don't really want to go down this route anymore.
I was just going to say, I got to call another point of order because this is about insurance, not about transportation contracts.
Yeah, back to the insurance, though, I'd like to ask a question.
Please, yes.
Why did it take six months to get us the documents?
In terms of, I'm not, I guess your question I'm not clear on.
That these, you've made a big vendor change. It's the city's right to review the documents, Board of Finance, City Council. We did not receive these documents in a timely fashion. Why?
Well, and that's your opinion in a timely fashion. I think that's the point.
Say it's six months. You made the change.
I think.
We didn't go through the vendor process. We didn't receive the documents. And we only recently received these. Why?
So I would disagree because at that meeting where that one-page document that the mayor shared probably six slides ago, that was actually shared at the board meeting over the summer, and that was actually put back into the packet as a budget document. So it was available. When all of the other requests came in for the signed copies for the contract, as the mayor said, that came through because we never had the complete bid packets. That was through our broker. And that's what the documents that Attorney Magistrally just mentioned earlier, that's the 5,000 pages that are coming through. We never had that. That was not ours. We had the one pager. We had the sign. Anything that we received, the second the city asked for, we said we're in receipt and we sent it over. The complete comment that you're talking about of six months is because that's how long the process takes to get all of the documents that we never had. That was from our broker and that we're now providing. The one pager was provided to the city, it was provided that evening at a board meeting, and it was provided in documents, and it was provided to the city, which is exactly the document that the mayor is referring to here. So the complete documents are not there.
Isn't providing the city the document? Was the city provided that one pager?
Yes.
At what point?
As it was provided the night the board prevented it, presented it.
And, and if I may, to Councilman Iveyne, yes, we, the city, did receive that one pager. I do believe that I did share it with the city council members. However, the reason we kept asking for the contracts is because on that one pager, there are mathematical errors. If you look at column one, the column doesn't add up correctly in the middle of the, in the middle of the page for the dental vision. I don't have it in front of me. Didn't add up. And that $500,000, there it is, thank you. And the $500,000 premium credit, there was no explanation for that. So absent the actual bid documents and just looking at a spreadsheet that didn't really give detail, it was, it was difficult for us to say with any confidence, you know, what these bids actually represented, including the final column, which was the Cigna. And because we do use Cigna, we know that they did bid the nine-month period, but they did not bid the 12-month period. So the fact that there's a 12-month period on this spreadsheet led me to question who prepared it and what documents did they use to prepare it. And that's why we continue to request through the Freedom of Information Act those underlying documents that would support this spreadsheet.
But to better answer your question, why didn't you just read the documents and ask us questions? That's what we do every meeting. This guy is better than anybody. But Superintendent is a math guy. But you received the package.
Through the two boards.
You got the package. Why didn't you look at it and ask the question? Or even attend a meeting?
Okay, so again, point of order. We're talking about insurance. So I don't want to go back and forth about the.
That's what I'm talking about. You questioned, you questioned the document. Here, you could have questioned it nine months ago, and Mr. Kavanaugh and I get along well. And we've talked about this. You got the document. It was public information.
Going forward, we're.
Yes.
We're, it was on. We're deep into the budget. In the budget season. The mayor, Board of Finance, they need, they need hard, hard data to make very challenging decisions this year. When does the, when does the mayor of the Board of Finance need some confirmation from the Board of Education that, in point of fact, this new contract is at least as good as or better, and therefore saving money for the city? When do you need that data by? I would, I would like some hard target date.
So the.
When you do your work.
Yeah, so I would agree with the superintendent. You know, we can't forecast the FY '26 expenses into the Internal Service Fund because, again, those, those numbers are based on experience and census. And because the Board of Education has moved away from Internal Service Fund, we would not be able to give a projection of what those costs would be if they had stayed in the Internal Service Fund. However, we could take FY '26 off the table. And if you just focus on FY '25, which we do have those numbers, you can see that, that the internal, the health benefits program through the Internal Service Fund was about $463,000 cheaper than the Anthem costs that are committed, that the Board of Education committed to. So it was cheaper to stay in the Internal Service Fund in the first year.
Again, just last time I'll ask you, then I'm done.
Okay.
I'm trying to move us forward. I'm trying to move, help you, Mayor, and Board of Finance get to the numbers you need to do the full city budget, okay? I don't want to hear about FOI requests. I don't want to hear about legal nonsense back and forth. I don't want to hear any more bullshit. I just want you to get the numbers that you and the Board of Finance needs from the people who have the data over here in a very simple, clear, direct, and transparent way. And what would be, for whatever process they take, what would be a hard target date for them to deliver the information that you need to take the next step?
I believe that information is in their budget. So the budget that is being presented by the Board of Education this evening includes the FY '26 insurance costs. I can't do a comparison of what those costs would be had they stayed in the Internal Service Fund. We've lost, we've lost that, you know, that trend analysis that is used to project those costs. So they're there. However, I would, to your point, with, you know, I hear the question. What is reflected in their budget proposal is a net number. So if you go forward, if you can, please, on the PowerPoint presentation on, no, back one page, please. On this page, again, we show that the true cost, based on the contract that the superintendent signed for insurance for the Board of Education employees, is $15,139,908.
As I was saying, you want a gross number, correct?
That is the gross number. The $15 million is the gross number. They budgeted in their budget book, the presentation is going to happen here, they budgeted that number net. It is not the true cost in their budget book. It is a net cost.
Okay, and would you like to make that adjustment then?
So it's certainly something for discussion purposes with the Board of Finance members.
Is this going to be a problem to do this?
I don't, it's, it's not necessarily a problem, but it just goes to how we budgeted and the explanation on the page, which you'll see in the next meeting. It doesn't change if we were to make that adjustment. But to answer your question, if I may, and I think the question you were trying to ask and what I was bringing up earlier, if the mayor has the, the number from Cigna moving forward for the city employees next year, you could extrapolate that number out to the point I was referring to earlier to see the real savings that it would be by locking in on the 21-month rate. I don't want to assume that I know your question, but I think that's where you were going I don't want to assume that I know your question, but I think that's where you were going just from a dollars-to-dollars perspective, and it is still hard to do.
The question is actually very, very simple. Is this contract and all of this mess that has been generated for a year now, did it actually save us money? That's really what I'm asking.
And I just, I do want to clarify. It's not that simple as saying, what is the city's cost escalation for coverage? Because we lost, we lost the scale. We lost.
100% agree. You lost 65%. But to the point of, when you extrapolated out the number on the previous page, just to be fair, if your number is now higher, that's a higher cost to the city. So if you put us back in, there is an algorithm that we can get close to. But my point is, I think that the fact that that 115 is going to go up if we looked at the net savings. And I'm not saying that losing 65% is not going to impact your rate. 100% it is. But I was just trying to assume his question, and if I assumed incorrectly, I apologize. But that's where I think you were going from a dollars-to-dollar comparative.
Yeah.
It's, yeah, I would agree that it's not that simple. And algorithm, you know, all of that doesn't work. We've lost the trend. We lost the scale. We can't say because the city's insurance goes up 5%, that would have been the same for the Board of Education. It just, it can't, it doesn't work that way.
I have something to say.
The what? And the stop-loss insurance also, yeah.
Well, in response to that, though, we have a mathematician in the room. We have a response to that. I'm going to go with the algorithm because he can probably write the algorithm for you. And I'm not disputing what you're going to say. But you made our case for us about you lost your ability. The school, I've said this for 10 years, our employees were supporting the city employees. So we asked for more clarity. You made the case for us. And there was no clarity. There was no bidding as we asked for. And I understand past practice, and it's been going on, the mayor didn't start this. But this had been talked about. This is, I've said it 15, 20 minutes ago. This should have been discussed as a city council for 15 years now, 12 years, at least, maybe 22 years. But nobody wanted to hear us. And you lost your leverage.
I'm sorry. I was saying, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt. Were you upset? All right, so Councilman Ruette has a question, and Board of Finance member Christopher Anderson has a question.
Actually, not a question. It's for, the Board of Finance now needs to go into this budget year with, if the numbers are so different, you know, the $800,000 that we think the Board of Ed owes the city, you're saying that it's $435,000 that you have. So that number, to me, is important, particularly for the Board of Finance. That's a lot of money that we feel as a city, you know, is owed, taxpayer money. So to me, that's the biggest question. This is the agenda item. So when will we get that so we don't have such a discrepancy?
I could try to answer that, but I think in fairness from a process standpoint, what I was referring to was this document was provided to us late yesterday afternoon, and that's fine. And we had time to obviously look at the document using the same spreadsheet format and using, just plugging in the numbers that we believe to be correct based on the joint resolution. And as I said earlier, the lawyers have been involved since day one with the joint resolution. So the numbers come from the joint resolution. We can say our numbers are right. You could say your numbers are right. My point being that when we put our calculations, it is $445,000 that the Board of Education would still be owed based on the same exact formulaic table that the mayor used, just with the numbers from the joint resolution that should have been inserted. So to answer your question, I really do believe that the lawyers have to take a look and say, yes, this column is correct, and whose number is correct in that column so that we can get an accurate answer.
So attorneys aren't really auditors.
No, they're not.
So, you know, in my mind, they're given a lot of information now. I mean, basically, the mayor has done a lot of work, you know, for, I would think, a forensic audit versus an attorney, to really look at the numbers, how they were presented by the city, and how the Board of Ed is actually interpreting it. You've got three finance, I imagine you're all part of the team. You know, and I appreciate the Board of Ed in terms of having a budget, you know, subcommittee. But, you know, you guys are accountants. A forensic audit, I would think, you know, would be more appropriate than, you know, an attorney to review.
I don't disagree. My point in referencing the attorney was just from some of the items in the joint resolution that would carry over into the table, I believe just would be disputed. But I don't disagree that a forensic auditor would have the best lens on it because from a mathematics standpoint, anyone's accounting side could look at it very differently. My point was, when the chart that we did with that same table that the mayor provided, the chart just has different numbers based on and based from that resolution. That's why we referenced the attorneys earlier. But you would be, I wouldn't disagree with you from a forensic auditing standpoint at all.
Yeah, and my only final comment is, that probably is not going to be done by the time they need to complete the budget, you know, which is, you know, we're looking at a very difficult budget year, as the mayor keeps reminding us, that, you know, the taxpayers are going to be looking for every penny. Not money that's owed, but money that is really owed the taxpayers back. So that's my only comment. Thank you.
And if I may, Christopher Anderson has his hand raised for a little while. Mr. Anderson?
Thank you. And I know this is a point I've raised once or twice before. I always pause before using the phrase forensic audit because that means a very particular thing. And I'm reasonably comfortable that if the board agrees on the methodology, we can check each other's receipts and come up with a reasonable number in not a lot of time. Hopefully, that won't be as difficult to process as everyone is worried it might be. My question, and this might get clarified later on in some of our other meetings, did I hear you right that we're changing our approach to how this is budgeted, going from a gross-to-gross to a net cost? And if that's the case, has anyone on either of the boards or the councils checked in with our auditors to make sure that that won't affect the city's standing rating or how our single audit is presented?
So, yes, you heard correctly. The Board of Education will be budgeting the insurance line item net of the premium cost shares they deduct from their employees' payroll. And we have had conversations with our auditor. I don't believe that it'll have a negative impact on our audit. And I don't know, Olivia, if you want to.
Did they opine on that? I mean, it seems like.
No, they have not opined on it. You know, that was just sort of a high-level.
Right. Yeah, I think when they were first looking at it with all this going on, back in fiscal year '24, they were kind of like, we'll look at it more in fiscal year '25 when we're actually going through it all. But I know that they were looking into that net budgeting and how that was going to be reflected in looks. So I think we just would need to wait until they come out for that for fiscal year '25, honestly, to get further verification on that.
And I know that in the FY '24 budget, because this was all brewing, coming to a head, you know, in June, July, August, September, while the audit was happening for FY '24, I know that they did encourage us to seek legal and an opinion, an attorney's opinion on this. So we have retained, the boards all met, we talked about this, we have retained a lawyer that is, has an area of expertise in employees' benefits and wage and labor law. And we'll continue that conversation with that lawyer. So are there any other questions regarding, oh, Mr. Putnam?
Just wanted to elaborate on the comparison document the city's provided us tonight where it showed the $463,000 excess cost for the board's insurance. That is, as you pointed out in your document, take the cost sharing out of it that everybody disagrees over. But the $500,000 credit that was received does in fact make the 2024 insurance cost for the Board of Ed a savings to the taxpayer. It's not a huge savings in this particular first year, but just so the record is set straight, the Board of Ed has not acted irresponsibly in saving and respecting the taxpayers' hard-earned money.
Which is why that next page does reflect the $500,000 and the premium cost share.
100% agree, but it did come up in some of the comments from the boards. Just wanted to be clear.
Yeah, and again, you know, true cost is what this board was asking for. True cost, because, again, looking through this lines of, how do we all be responsible to our taxpayers? You know, and if there is, in fact, a much better deal out there, should we be investigating that?
I would say the entire room would agree with that statement, that if there's a better way to skin the cat, as many have said, the group of 35 people involved in this meeting would all agree, what's best for the taxpayers?
Got it. I appreciate that. Final call for questions, so I can close this meeting out and move into the next meeting. Final call for questions. All right, then, I lost my agenda. There being no reason to take action on any of this discussion, I don't, do you need me to table those other two? Should I table it just for, no? All right, then, there being no further business before this joint meeting, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette. Did I hear a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Cavanero, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any post? All right, we're adjourned. We're going to move into, and I know, do we want to take a five-minute recess? And I don't know if the council members want to exit or take the audience seats. Then, so now this. Okay. Let me, let me call this meeting to order because we do still have a public hearing after this. So for the record, it is still Tuesday, April 29th. It is now 7:03 PM. And this is a special meeting of the Board of Finance. And the agenda items are no action, all presentation. So we've already pledged the flag. I'll jump right into item number one. I will entertain a motion to open the meeting for presentation of the education budget request by the Board of Education.
Some of.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Do we have a second? And I heard a second from Mrs. Trab. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
We're open to presentation.
Is it going to be on the screen? Okay. Okay, no problem.
Good evening, everyone. We're going to go through a high-level presentation. You have the entire team here this evening, the Board of Education, the Central Office, Cabinet. And the reason for that is to answer any questions as they come up and as we go through it. Our hope is that many of you have reviewed the document or have seen our presentations and/or even have read our Q and A sheet. The reason we put a Q and A sheet at the end is to make sure that we have answered any and all questions that have come up, whether they be from our board members or from when we had our community meeting with the public. So I'm going to take you through some highlight slides here. Obviously, the first several are just what we're all about, right? We're all about team, we're all about community, and we're all about our students. And I want to really point out page four. And page four is the story behind the numbers. You know, anytime we do a budget, everyone just thinks numbers, right? And for us, the Board of Education, we actually think, what do the numbers stand for? What is behind the numbers? And for us, it's all about its impact on our students, right? And the students are a big part of our community. It's why people choose to move here, it's why people choose to stay here. And obviously, there's a testament to that, and that's why the story behind our numbers is so prevalent. You know, also, in this page, and you'll see there's a vision and mission, and we'll go through that, obviously. But I want to point out, and you know, while some people might say, you know, the percentage increase is high, right? And we'll point that out on pages five, 18, and page 96. But basically, what that comes down to and the rationale behind it is, if we look over a four-year average of under 1% being an increase, while we are appreciative, there's simply no way to sustain that. With contractual obligations, with insurance costs, with just costs of operating, as we all know, any business owner knows, under 1% is just not sustainable. So if we look at our next pages, page eight, and I want to highlight some real important pieces as to why, what's the driver, right? I mean, we can sit here and talk about what are we doing, but what drove that number, right? So if we look at that, and if we look at page eight, our certified staff increased 7.51%. Our non-certified staff increased 10.08%. And our benefits increased of 10.42. Now, if you look at those numbers and you kind of just take an average, we're well over the amount that we actually asked for. And that's because we also went down in areas. So what I hope this board and the community appreciates and understands is, by doing these document pages and by doing the narrative at the bottom of why the increase and why the decrease, we actually want to be able to explain that to you, to the community. We didn't want to just put a number there and say, well, that's the number. That is what it is, right? Without being able to answer it. We tried to answer the question that we had when we did it. So if you look at the first one, you know, why the increase? Well, we had some retirements, but the increase in contractual obligations. We also have some new positions that we have to add because of some new programs that we're bringing that are going to benefit all of our students. And I want to pause there for a second because we've heard a couple of times about how does it benefit our students, right? And everyone loves the term return on investment, right? That's the term that we all use for businesses and for operating. So our investment is in our students, right? Our teachers, our administrators, our entire staff. We have them here in the audience tonight. They work extremely hard. They're extremely dedicated. And have we seen those results? Have we had that return on investment in any of the dollars, that under 1% that I referred to, that we've actually received? And I want Mrs. Ferguson to talk briefly about what that return on investment looks like for our students so that everyone can understand that's where these dollars go to and what it's benefiting.
Hi, everybody. I just want to share a little bit of good news. It seems like there's not enough of that to go around lately. I don't know if you're aware, if the community's aware, but we did implement a new reading program a year ago. So this is year two of the implementation. And just in year two, we're really seeing some very nice results. State of Connecticut, a couple of years ago, moved to a growth model for accountability. And I just want to share that three of our schools, Forbes, Southwest, and Vogel Webmore, have been recognized throughout the past two years as schools of distinction for commendable growth. On last spring's state assessments in reading and in math, Torrington outperformed the state on both growth rate and the percentage of target achieved in all grades but grades six and seven. And Forbes School outperformed the state in reading this past year with the percentage of students meeting the grade level benchmark. In addition to state testing annually, we screen our students three times a year, fall, winter, and spring, using a state-approved assessment. K to five, we're now consistently seeing significant growth from fall to spring, with our youngest learners making the most impressive gains. In kindergarten, this past, this school year, we went from 22% of students testing at the grade level benchmark in the fall to 54% of those same students hitting that target in January. We're seeing similar results in grades one, two, and three. And in grades four and five, we're seeing 67% and 68% of our kids performing at proficiency in reading and math. And while that doesn't sound like a number perhaps to celebrate, 67% or 68%, it is a huge, huge improvement from where we've been over the past few years. We implemented the new literacy program in grade six this year, so this is the first year of that rollout, this past September. And we're very excited about being able to hold on to grade six at the intermediate level and really kind of retain grade six as an elementary grade. We believe this is going to have huge benefits for our sixth graders, and we're really looking forward to the continued momentum. Preliminary indicators, not official yet, are that our current ninth graders' PSAT scores in reading that they took this year reflect an 11% increase over last year's performance as eighth graders on the Smarter Balance Assessment. And just anecdotally, I can tell you that really good things are happening. The superintendent and I are in the schools, in the classrooms several times a week. So we see firsthand all of the great things that are happening with our kids and the learning and the growing. It's exciting to be there. We're in kindergarten and first-grade classrooms where the kids are, they're reading. And again, that sounds a little bit basic and simplistic, but they haven't been doing that. And since we've shifted now back to a more traditional, science-based, phonetic-based, instructional delivery model, we're seeing the benefit of that. So I would love to take any member of the city board for a visit. So if anybody's ever interested in going on a tour, let me know.
Thank you, Sue. And, you know, we talk, that's our biggest return on investment, right, is our students, right? And who else impacts our students? And I'm going to embarrass my cabinet members for a second, and I know they didn't want me to do this this evening. But we have our facilities director, Dean Pergola. You know, Dean is working very hard with all of our custodial staff to try to not only ensure that our buildings are safe and clean for all of our students, but also while managing a tight, tight budget and doing it the best way that he can. You know, we have our human resource director, Kim Schulte, you know, working to ensure that contracts not only are upheld, but that when contracts are negotiated, to the most fair market standard possible, and ensuring that we have positions filled daily, once again, to meet our students' needs. We have Kristin Gagnon, right? She's our food services director. Ensure that we have quality meals each and every day for our students. What people don't want to hear, that food insecurity is very real. It's very real across the country, and it's very real in Torrington. And sometimes, the two meals that our students get are the two meals when they're in school. So Kristin does a great job and her team providing meals for our staff. We have Rachel Vienz, our Director of Technology. She ensures that every student has a device that's working, operable. If it's broken, we have programs in place where we can fix it so we don't have to pay the, have the taxpayers pay more money and fix those devices. Another method where we do some savings, you know, you heard from Sue Ferguson, Curriculum Instruction Assistant Superintendent, how we are making that return on investment. Laura Klimazewski, Special Education Assistant Superintendent of Pupil Services, ensuring that all students, we don't label all students, are receiving a free and appropriate education. And what that means and what services that needs to be provided, that never, ever goes unnoticed. You know, we have our finance director. You know, we have our finance director, Donna Labby, and slash grant person. You'll hear she wears two hats, right? And we're doing more with less for that very reason. We understand that it's a burden on the taxpayers, we understand what it entails, and we understand that we take it very seriously. But those are methods that we do to try to not only obtain every dollar when she puts her grant hat on, but also how to manage every single dollar when she puts her Director of Finance hat on. So I wanted to highlight that because return on investment is so, so important, and our team takes it very, very seriously. You know, people don't realize our cabinet meets, you know, once every other week, just to have those kind of high-level meetings on what are we doing and how does it impact our students. That is always our focus, that will always be our focus. And I'm going to share, and I'm going to embarrass our board members, that's our board members' focus. All of these members here who are elected have students first, just as I'm sure all of you do as well. So when we talk return on investment, our return on investment is our students, and it is and always will be. So I wanted to point that out because I've heard that, I heard that last year at our presentation, but I really wanted to highlight that and to make sure everyone understands that's how we take it seriously. So if we look and we move forward a little bit, we talk about grants, so we just talked about grants for a second. And if we did not receive these grants, our total budget would be ninety-six million eight hundred and twenty-five thousand four hundred and seventy-seven dollars, which would represent a twenty-three percent increase. You know, as I said earlier, and I don't want to embarrass Donna, but Donna literally goes above and beyond to, and there are some grants I've never heard of. I mean, her and Rachel were working on one a couple of weeks ago, and I was like, just go with it. I didn't even hear of it yet from the state, but she is apprised of every single grant that comes out and every single opportunity that we can to try to receive money, once again, to lessen the burden. So our grants piece is right there, and that's been asked before, and how do the grants look? And that's exactly how they look for us, totaling twelve million fifty-nine thousand six hundred and thirty-nine dollars. So our summary detail, these are the detailed pages that do get displayed at every single budget subcommittee meeting, and then obviously, the full board does adopt. So this is our budget in total. But once again, I want to reference this because I referenced it earlier as a highlight page, but it is beyond important. You know, salaries and benefits across the country, across Connecticut, wherever you go, I just attended a national conference in St. Louis and actually was honored to be a speaker there, and one of the topics was budget, and I shared our budget process. And they were actually really intrigued and really interested on how we do it and how we go about it, and the Q and A, and the detail, and pointing out the return on investment, which obviously, kudos to us for doing it, but everyone is in the same boat. Meaning, if seventy to eighty percent of our budget is salary and benefits, what's left to provide for our students? That's not a lot of money, that's not a lot of dollars. It is a lot of people, but our return on investment is working. Sue Ferguson mentioned how it's working, the scores are showing that. We have quarterly meetings with our alliance team and with the state. The alliance people have noted that we are actually exceeding so many other alliance districts in the area of growth and the area of achievement. We cannot be prouder of that. That is not done in isolation, that is done as a team. Our entire staff, teachers, paraprofessionals, cafeteria custodians, our entire single staff, administrators, that's how this work gets done, and that's what we're proud of. But to be remiss if we didn't point out that seventy-one percent of our budget is salaries and benefits, and that's what page eighteen clearly shows. Obviously, you know, people always are curious, what are some rates of pay? So we put that in there. Our stipended positions, we put that in there because we wanted to be fully transparent, and it is in everyone's contract anyway, and it is published on our website, so we put that in there as well. And then we do something a little different than some other districts and some other towns, not only in Connecticut but across the country. We actually show you down to the detail what the position is and what the pay is. And we do that, once again, open book. We have nothing to hide. We believe that all of the work that we're doing at each and every school and all of those individuals that you see in the next several pages come back to that return on investment as we spoke about. I apologize, there'll be a lot of clicking here. I don't think I can fast forward. So we talk about our demographics here. And, you know, our demographics have changed a bit here in Torrington, but this slide really highlights where we're at, between our white, Hispanic, Latino, Black, African-American, multiracial, Asian, and other. And the pie chart just gives a nice descriptor of that. And we're very proud to have a diverse community. We couldn't be prouder. People are moving into Torrington, which is a great thing. The mayor and I have talked about the fact that people are coming. You know, who's coming? It's great. It helps to be more of a melting pot. You know, we talk about our EL versus our non-EL, and we actually have Joanne Creed in here who wanted to say a few words about our EL. So Joanne, if you'd like to come on down? You're the next contestant?
Good evening, everybody. I just am happy to share, we've got some really good news. So every year, we have to administer a test of English proficiency, of course, to our English learners. And the results this year were really very significant. We had sixty-three students reach mastery, that is academic grade-level proficiency in reading, writing, listening, and speaking. And that is, that doesn't happen automatically, it happens over years of work by the students and by the parents, the teachers, and all of the classroom teachers and support staff who work with kids. So that's, that's just an amazing feat for this year. Also, last year, we don't have the final rates yet, but we have been consistently outperforming in terms of our overall growth rate. Sue Ferguson talked about how we're always measuring now in terms of growth, and our literacy has been growing in terms of this last length, this annual summative assessment. A couple of just human interests, but this is, this is the kind of thing that we really appreciate and is all about, it's all about the kids. One of our elementary EL students was, or will be awarded the Superintendent's Award for Academic Achievement and Community Contributions. And one of our EL students has only been at Torrington High School a short amount of time, but won at the regional level for Connecticut History Day and will be presenting this Saturday at the state. So I just wanted to share a little bit of the good news and the accomplishments, the achievements of our kids. And that is a return on investment as well. Thank you.
Before you leave the microphone, how many different languages now in the Torrington Public Schools?
We're, we're at about forty different languages.
Thanks, Joanne. So as you can see, and thank you, Joanne, for reiterating, it is all about our students, and that's the return on investment that our budget does support, and that is our focus. We have some, just some data points here that we can go through, free and reduced lunch, our numbers are up. And it's actually, it's pretty interesting, the free and reduced numbers actually have been up across the board for the state lately, so Torrington is no different, but we're increasing a little higher than the state average, but that's okay. That's kind of where we're at. And then obviously, we did some enrollment projections. We've heard, you know, where, how are we looking, where are we at? And our enrollment projections, that's done by the NESDEC group, and that's kind of a hard chart to read, so I apologize, but that's just how they give it to us. So we try to break it down a little more. And it's interesting because that chart has actually been proven to be incorrect, even though they refresh it every year, because we are getting more students. We, our enrollment numbers are up, and we have a lot of students that are enrolling, even up to and including today, we had three new students register. So our registration numbers are going up, and people are moving into town. So it's a good thing, but those numbers are a little off from the NESDEC group. We talk about what it's going to look like in the schools next year, and when we, obviously with the redistricting as well. And then we have our special education, and, you know, you can see that our special education numbers, you know, are hovering steady at this point. And as I said, that's a testament to Assistant Superintendent Klimazuski and her team to ensure that all students are receiving their education. And obviously, we have our outplacement. We are mandated to do the tuition for our outplaced students, our magnet schools as well, and our VOAG as well. So if we look at our detail, you know, the last kind of chunk, if you will, is really just detail line by line into the weeds, if you will, some people like to refer it as that document. But as I said earlier, if you go to, write to page ninety-six, page ninety-six, which is the culminating page of that, is exactly where you see the seven point two eight percent lineup with the five, five million seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and fifty-one dollar request for the Board of Education for our twenty-five, twenty-six school year budget. And as I said, I know you've had time to review it on your own, I know you've had time to review the Q and A sheet, which I hope you found helpful, but we are here tonight as a full team to answer any questions, and you have the best of the best in terms of if you have a special education question, a curriculum question, any other, you have the team members here to answer those questions. Thank you.
Questions for the superintendent?
I have a question on page nine. Talk about the Fast Academy. Can you explain that to me, please?
Absolutely. So Fast Academy was an idea that started back in October of 2023 to, because of the new buildings and because of the redistricting, what were we going to do with our Forbes School? And we wanted to make an alternative school at Forbes, hence Fast Academy. And what that will do is, our current alternative students in grades seven to twelve will now be housed at Forbes School, Fast Academy, where they will receive their educational opportunity there, and there will also be opportunities to partner with local businesses and to have mentors to really help those students to see that there is another path. So Forbes, Fast Academy is for those students who are school-averse. It does not mean that they're troubled students, it does not mean that they're difficult students. What it means is that they need a different way to obtain their educational experience, and that's what we're providing. We currently provide that in our middle school and our high school currently, so those programs would now be moved to Fast Academy, and we would actually be able to have more opportunities for electives, for other students because of the space that it opens up.
What students are going to the former East School?
That's owned by Ed Advance now.
Do we get tuition credits or tuition breaks for standing students there? I thought that was part of the deal when we sold the school.
We do, we get a minimal credit for some of those students that do attend the former East School.
And what kind of students are they?
So there's two programs currently at East School, one is for our expelled students, and one is for special education students.
So these kids will not be going to Fast?
That's, so, some of the, so part of, also part of Fast Academy, we will house our expelled students there as well in a different part of the building. So some of those students who were currently at receiving their expelled education there will be coming back there, but the special education program will not be there. That will stay at East.
So the, and the, on page nine, you have just administrator, teachers, custodians, you don't have a cost, and I'm one of these special ed teachers, are these just academic teachers?
Great question. Those are academic teachers, that would be at Fast Academy. We do have a special education teacher as well in there, in the total of the seven teachers, but it's for your math teacher, a social studies teacher, a science teacher, and an English teacher, as well as, under the teacher contract, we have other areas as well, so special education, counselors, things of that nature.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do you have an anticipated enrollment number for this?
We do. So currently, what our current number of students, currently, there's roughly about forty students for alternative program, so we're looking to start at roughly around that number, but it could, it could grow and it could be very different. It all depends on the students who, through a process, meaning once the administrators and the parents work with the families, to see which students would want or need, I should say, to go to an alternative setting, but our current alternative student population is roughly around forty.
Is there any other use of the building? That's an awful big building for forty kids. Are you going to have a cafeteria, meal, provide meals and so forth?
We will, and we will have a physical education component because per state statute, they need to do that. But we will also, as I said, part of that building will be also housed for our expelled students and also for our eighteen-to-twenty-two-year-old program. Those students will be coming back into to, into town, into our schools. So we are going to utilize the space, and the other pieces of that building that we're going to utilize, not only for storage, but also for what we call just-in-time trainings. We often have professional development opportunities throughout the year, sometimes, currently, they held at Midgen Avenue, and anyone who knows Midgen, the parking over there is less than ideal. So having a space for just-in-time training for our staff is exactly what we're using that space for.
Do you have a number, a budget number for Fast, don't the Academy only?
So we did do a presentation on that. I don't have that number with me this evening, but that number, and I, just from recollection, and I apologize, was roughly two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we're getting from a grant. So it cost the taxpayers no money to do that, except for keeping Forbes open. And in conversations with the mayor, we've had some really good conversations about possibly partnering with the city and using part of the building as well in the future for other opportunities. So in terms of a dollar cost, it does not cost the taxpayers money because we're using the money from a grant to do it.
I hate to be cynical, but you're saying you're going to have one administrator, seven teachers, five custodians, a clerical cafeteria staff for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
No, the five custodians, that's a total number for everywhere from that line item, not just for Fast Academy. The Fast Academy was specific, yeah.
But you're going to have an administrator and seven teachers?
That's correct.
For two hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
So if we, if Donna just pulled it up, thank you. So when we bring back those students and that tuition, the total cost is seven hundred and ninety-six thousand, seven thirty-six. We currently spend a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to do that. We spend thirty thousand dollars on our current tutors in-house. Transportation, we're receiving a savings from our transportation company because we're bringing them in-house as well, around three hundred thousand. So the total left would be two hundred and eighty-nine thousand, I was close, thank you. Two hundred and eighty, that's coming from our alliance grant to do this program, and that's everyone in that list.
Okay, two quick questions. One, do you know how many students would be coming from the East School?
Currently, they have fifteen there now.
And you're taking them?
Well, fifteen, and the eighteen to twenty-two, Laura, how many? Thirteen.
And you're taking them all out of there while we're getting a tuition break and bringing them to Fast, is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, the other question I had, flips my mind momentarily, is, I forget what it was.
That's all right. That's all right. I think that, I'll come back to you. Okay. Wendy Trab, I think, had her hand up. Are you still on, Wendy?
Yeah, I'm here. Thank you. A question I asked last year, and I'm, maybe there's no answer for this yet, but, you know, we used to talk about, you know, making improvements over years and everything like that. This Alliance District designation, what do we as City of Torrington have to do to get off the Alliance District designation? I mean, these type of improvements I'm hearing about in this presentation are amazing, that's great. When does it get to a point where we say, okay, now we no longer have to have that distinction?
So Donna, or I can answer, I'll start, and if Donna, if I miss anything, please share. You know, to have an alliance distinction, obviously, there's a lot of factors that went into it, why we were designated an alliance district, but the improvements that we're making and being highlighted by the state when we do meet with our alliance person from the state, we are exceeding the expectations of other alliance districts. That does not mean that we're automatically out. There's a lot of talk of where the alliance grant is going, but if, and one of the items that superintendents from across the state, myself included, signed to the state, is that if any one of the alliance districts were to ever lose their designation, that money still should come to the board and what that would look like. So we actually just signed that, we sent that to legislators, we sent that to the Commissioner of Education. So while we are on every track to get out, and get out would mean not only our growth numbers, but our actual proficiency numbers do meet or exceed, and then if we were to get out, then that money, obviously, hopefully, the legislators agree with the superintendents and would send that money still because that money is needed to support our students. So it's a hard question to say, what's the threshold? But the threshold, to answer it simply, would be not only to have our growth numbers increase, but to have our proficiency numbers increase.
Okay, so, so there's no rubric as far as the state is concerned with alliance districts. I guess it might, my concern is, it's just like with welfare or any other program, where's the exit? How do you determine what the exit is, and how does the City of Torrington know if they're ever going to be in the exit? And I've said this before, I agree with you, by the way, I think it has always been our assumption that the increases in the alliance district funding would get added back into your ECS, it would, because your ECS has been frozen for years. So I, I would assume that it would become part of your ECS funding, you know, at nine or ten million dollars, that, that would be impossible not to have. You know, so that being said... You know, so that being said, yes, I would, I would hope that that would happen because obviously the City of Torrington taxpayers couldn't pick up ten million dollars of money that we lost. My, my other concern, and I know I've had this question, and I was, you know, reminded last year that all Alliance District money cannot be used to basically pay for things that were already in the budget, that they had to be used for things, you know, as extra services, extra staff, or whatever the case may be. And your detailed staffing reports, and I understand staffing changes, the teachers change from different buildings, the difference in staff, you might decide you need a different position versus, so I'm not, I'm not arguing those. But in the middle school alone, I was concerned because in your list from last, I looked at last year's list compared to this year, you have positions that used to be, that got over to the Alliance, between what was given to us last year during your budget presentation and the current year one, which you show last year's amounts in it. So I'm kind of concerned. There's, there's language arts teachers that were budgeted under operating, which were now in this current year are under Alliance Grant, according to your report, system principal, STEM teacher in your central, you have an IT tech, they were budgeted, again, operating, now it looks like they're, so I guess I'm confused. I was told that you cannot supply, you know, that you have to take that money, it has to be used for something new, but it looks like from the budget, budget presentation staffing report we got last year to the one that you gave us this year, which shows last year in the column, they don't, they don't match up, and some of them look like the dollars. After the budget was presented to us and we voted on it, those monies got transferred, or those positions got transferred into the Alliance District. So I might be missing something, but the way I'm looking at it, comparing last year's column to this year's prior year column, which is the current year, some of those positions seem like they're getting paid out of the Alliance District funding now, which we were told you could not do. So I'm concerned. I don't like the Alliance District funding for you as the Board of Ed because I think it ties your hands. I think if that money was in your ECS funding, you would have a better ability to use that money, utilize that money where you saw fit. Obviously, if you have raises coming up for your teachers, administrators, so on, staff, you can't use the Alliance District money for that. And we know the ECS money has been frozen for years. So I, I'm number one for advocating to get out of this Alliance District as soon as possible because I think it's tying your hands as a Board of Ed as to where you can best use your money. And second of all, I, I am curious, I was told the Alliance District money could not be used, you know, to support current positions, yet it seems like that happened.
So you, you are correct. You know, the Lions District has a lot of management to, tied to it. You know, there's, whenever we put an initiative in the Alliance Grant, it is written in and has to be vetted, it has to be approved. Once it is approved, that's when we can allocate dollars towards it. It's not as if we can't just, we can say, take one out and the other. To answer your question, why you're seeing that is, as Assistant Superintendent Ferguson referenced earlier, this benchmark reading program was moved to include grade six, and grade six is currently housed at our middle school. So what we were able to do was, because that reading program had showed success in grades K five, by putting it in grade six, we were allowed, with a blessing, if you will, or the thumbs up from the state and from our Alliance rep, that we can put some of those people in there that do support that initiative. It would not be used just to take a swap out. You are one hundred percent correct. But the reason that you noticed that, and that's a fair point, is because we did bring our reading program up to our grade six friends, which we are hopeful, we see the same exact benefits as we've seen in the K five. But that is the only reason that we've been allowed to do that and to put those staff members underneath the Alliance umbrella.
Thank you. And, and so for me, I think because I like to compare, obviously, last year, this year, whatever, going forward and see the trends, it would be helpful. I mean, obviously, I know you, you, you as the board have to submit to, to the state every year your plan for your Alliance District funding, and, you know, you have to put it in different sections and which positions you're, as you just said, you're, you're thinking of doing. Only because, remember, when you're presenting a budget to the Board of Finance, and there's a final dollar, whether it's eighty million, eighty-five million, it's a request for a certain number of staff that are paid for out of the current, you know, the current budget, not grants. And then if you transfer some of those positions to and a grant after the budget is presented and voted on, it obviously clears up more money for you to utilize in other places. And the question is, was that money actually needed? Would it have been covered by a grant? So I, I always like to look at those. Obviously, our, our grants do pay for some very important things in the Board of Education. But understanding, just like with the health insurance line item, when we first budgeted for the health insurance, at the time, obviously, last May, we assumed you would be on our health insurance. Because you weren't, all of a sudden, that amount you budgeted is already different. You're already seeing a, a savings, I would say, you're gonna see an overage in, or leftover in that account because of that. So I know it's really, really difficult in April and May of this year to try to determine what's gonna go into your grants. But at the same point, if they get put in the operating budget, and then the budget is approved, and the taxpayer money is transferred to the Board of Ed, and then all of a sudden you say, oh, wait a minute, I can take that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in different positions and put them in a grant, you automatically have seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars now that you technically didn't need. And I, I know that sounds wrong, but I think you're understanding. I'm just trying to do apples to apples as far as staff goes.
And I understand that, and, you know, obviously, whenever a grant is written, you know, and whatever the allocated dollar amount is, we don't know our additional Alliance dollars. Right now, our information is based on that number being the same Alliance allocation. Now, we assume that we're gonna get an additional one point three million, that's the initial, you know, rumor mill, if you will, but with the state of affairs lately, I, I don't know. But in terms of how we have put our budget forward, and I understand the question and the concern, I hope I cleared up why we were able to do that in previous years. We just don't know, moving forward at this juncture, where we're gonna be with that.
I have a question. Come to you next. Is the only line in the budget that is net, the insurance line? Are all the others gross?
I could answer that. Yes. We do it with the retirees' insurance as well, and we've always, you know, kind of gone through the audit with line colors with reference to that. So I did wanna address that at this point, too. So we're able to do that.
So the retirees is, is net also?
Correct. Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Wright?
Okay, I did think of my question. And I hate to beat a dead horse here, but I'm still on this Fast Academy. You said two hundred and fifty, roughly, thousand dollars is gonna pay for what, what you need to get the school going. I think that's wonderful. At some point, there's two aspects here. One, if you're hiring teachers to work with kids that have special needs of whatever sort, I would think I'd, I would like to see experienced teachers in those positions. Are you gonna hire teachers on grant money and administrators on grant money and expect to get experienced teachers to come in and deal with these students that have issues? That's, that would be my concern. And isn't that grant money gonna roll over into a full-time position in a regular budget item in future years?
So a- at some point down the line, it may roll into a, a future budget item, you're correct. And, and to answer your question about, you know, highly, highly qualified, that's a very deep process that we will go through our HR department, our principal of that building will have a say in that, and we will have the best people there to educate those students and to work with those students. And, you know, moving forward, if the program becomes very successful, you know, there, there's an opportunity down the line that we may be able to, and not in year one or two, but maybe possibly year three, if the program has some success, opening it up to some outside area schools and possibly doing a tuition. So if it came to the point where we had to put it in our regular budget or general budget, we might be able to offset it that way. But because of the newness of the program and the benefits of the program, we don't see for the first two years that we would not be able to cover it via a grant, because I think the benefits are there.
Just a little follow-up. Do we have a behavioralist in the district? We have one or two behavioral, how many do we have?
Yeah, please.
Hi. We have three BCBAs, so there's four certified behavior analysts. In addition to that, we have one master's level of behavior interventionist, and we have fourteen registered behavior technicians.
Excellent. Do we, do you have psychologists for the district?
Yes. We have a psychologist in every building.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions for the board or administration? All right. I guess that's it. We're good. So I am going to close this portion of the agenda. To do so, oh, wait, we haven't gone over the capital budget. I apologize. Capital. No, I'm sorry. Yeah, I apologize. All right, so review and discussion regarding the capital budget. Dean, you're on.
Okay, as you can see, we have each school broken down as far as capital we're asking for this year. You know, some, some of this has been initiated from our facility study that was done about three years ago. And I did take some of those numbers, and I, I added to the estimate just because the cost inflation that we've seen in the last couple of years. So as you can see, you know, a lot of these projects are substantial, like our roof at the Vogel Wetmore School that is really in dire need. We've been patching it and, and trying to, you know, not impact student learning is, 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 is our major goal. Our roof at Southwest School is also another big item that's on there. So a lot, again, a lot of this stuff is, is based off of that facility study, but you'll see, a lot of it is stuff that is gonna be, it's needed to be done sooner than later. The, the other big item that you'll see is Torrenford School, our chiller over there that we actually have contractor going out tomorrow to put another Band-Aid on it so we can have cooling in that building. That's, that's been in dire need for a couple of years, and we've spent money repairing that and continuing to, you know, keep it going. You know, most of this stuff, the end of useful life has, has, has passed by, by, by years at this point. And we're, we're kind of getting by right now, holding our breath, hoping one of those major items doesn't turn into a catastrophe. So if there's any questions on any of the items, be happy to answer them.
Wendy Trab has a question.
Hi, thank you. I apologize, I do not have all of my information with me. There was a report on current capital projects fund balance, I think, for Board of Ed, and somewhere, and I don't remember where, so I apologize, there was a charge on there for Torrenford School to, for something like locking or, I don't know, security on the foyer. And
Yes, so.
How much was that?
I don't have the complete total in front of me, but that was a locked foyer that we completed this past Christmas time, actually. We, we finished it. It originally started with the Torrington Middle School and, and the Torrenford School. Because of the escalated cost, we had to split it up. The Torrington Middle School was completed last summer, and so it's, it's a, if you're asking what the question is, I don't have the dollar amount in front of me, sorry, what it is, but it's a, it's a safety locked foyer where, where it's a, additional doors put in along, you know, safety glass, bulletproof glass that's installed, you know, panic hardware that goes on there along with security cameras and, you know, our card reader to go in. So it's, it's a full system, that's another level of security for front entrances.
Because I, I do, and again, I apologize, I do not have the information. I had thought at the time it was three or four hundred thousand dollars. And I was questioning that over, I think this has come before us before, about the chillers and how those things are desperately needed. And I think those are, what, in the six hundred thousand dollar range? So I guess my question is, how does that, how does that decision get made? Once these presentation of this, the five-year proposed capital plan comes up, how does that shift after the fact to decide that something, you know, of, of that nature of a roof or, you know, chillers, heating units, things like that for this school building? What was the, was there a grant involved in this? Like, what would determine all of a sudden that? Or was it in there, and I apologize because I don't have it? Was it already in the budget, capital budget last year?
Yeah, this was actually two, maybe two years ago, actually, when I started, it was already in there. So we just finished the job up that was started, to be honest with you, before my time, but it was not a grant.
No, it was, and thanks, Dean. It was, it was pure for student safety and staff safety. You know, the, those foyer locked entrances are part of a study that Dean inherited when he came onboard as Director of Facilities, but those are, are areas where we can firm up our security and safety measures in all of the buildings, and that's why that had to take priority. Not that the roof or the chillers or any, they're obviously all of equal importance, but you can't put a price on student safety.
Thank you.
Other questions for Dean? Would there ever be any consideration of putting pre-K at Forbes School? Should we go to universal pre-K?
So, you know, we, we, obviously, if there is a discussion to ever go universal, by opening up Fast Academy and by redistricting the way we have, we've actually freed up some space in some of our other buildings because we were somewhat busting at the seams. So that wouldn't necessarily be the ideal location, our first location.
Okay.
But it, we have a space for it in our other buildings.
In the other building?
Yep, that's a great question.
I'm just keeping my fingers crossed at some point. Other questions on the capital plan? Right, so you're pointing for the tech, the technology? Yeah, so that's our next agenda item.
I'm sorry.
That's all right, yeah. All right, yeah, Rachel, by her way.
Hello. So, yeah, my capital plan for this year, I, I think is pretty straightforward. It's really just a replacement of end-of-warranty devices. So the director before me invested in these devices, they are now coming to a point where they are out of warranty, and that would, you know, it would behoove the district to refresh those devices in order to keep costs down, as well as, I also have on here, upgrading the other buildings to our new phone system, trying to make the other buildings, you know, work with our new building and have all one system. Our phone system that is in our other buildings is pretty outdated, and my vendors are begging me to get rid of it, as well as it would definitely help with the cost savings of not paying for physical copper lines, because everything is going voice-over IP. And then laptop replacements, which is something that has carried over, I believe, for the past two years in capital funds, just trying to get the teachers' devices a refresh as well, because some of them are using devices that are quite dated.
Questions for Rachel? Wright?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, then that completes the agenda items on this portion of the meeting lineup. If there are no other questions for the Board of Finance members, the Board of Ed, including to the screen, then I'm going to call for a motion to adjourn this meeting. So moved. Thank you, Mrs. Pesky, and second by Mr. Wright. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now, I do have to open up the public hearing portion of this evening. And before I open this meeting, I've had a request from several of the Board of Finance members to limit the public comment to be made from residents or taxpayers. to be made from residents or taxpayers of the city of Torrington only. Was that posted that way? It was. Thank you. Okay. So again, the purpose of this meeting is to solicit Torrington residents' input regarding the proposed budget for the Torrington Public Schools for the first, excuse me, fiscal period, July 1, 2025 to June 30, 2026. For the record, we are opening this portion or this public hearing at 7:54 PM. And Carol, could you read the legal notice for us?
Notice is hereby given that the City of Torrington's Board of Finance will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, April 29, 2025, to solicit input from Torrington residents regarding the Torrington Public Schools' proposed budget for the fiscal period from July 1, 2025 to June 30, 2026. The public hearing will follow the previous Board of Finance meetings that start at 5:30 PM in the City Hall Auditorium at 140 Main Street in Torrington, Connecticut. All interested parties are invited to participate in person or by Zoom. Attendees will be granted up to three minutes to comment. Instructions for participating by phone or online are available on the city website. Copies of the proposed budget are available to the public by calling the Office of the City Clerk, dated at Torrington, Connecticut, this 21st day of April, 2025. Carol Anderson, City Clerk.
Thank you, Carol. Okay, I think there's a sign-up sheet. And just for anybody that's sitting in the audience still, you don't necessarily need to sign up to speak. At the end, we'll go through the list. If there's somebody that hasn't signed up and wishes to speak, I'll do that. I'll call before. All right, we're going to start with, the first person on this list is Gary Ucalito. You have.
Gary Ucalito, 55, Proprietary Land in Torrington, Connecticut. I do want to thank the mayor for spending the last 12 years going through all this back and forth. We probably didn't agree on much when it came to Board of Ed, but as a Board of Ed member, you know, our job is to do what's best for the students, I should say. Just to Mr. Wright real quick, the FAST program, I've jumped on that train because I found out what goes on with our students that do get expelled at advance. Just so you know, it's two hours a day of education, maybe two hours and 15 minutes. That's the state minimum. And I don't know, we spend $40,000, $50,000 a year for that. The goal is to bring it back and save money in the long run and bring better services. I think the kids are getting five and a half hours in this new program, maybe six. You know, we've come a long way. And I will remind the board, they did invest in our program seven or eight years ago. I think it was maybe $800,000 for the Special Ed Department to bring in behaviorists, bring in behaviorists and other, you know, groups of people. We were known by, throughout the state as having an oral problem. That's the reason I asked to get on the board. We were at 22.8%, I think, state average for Special Ed category students in our system. We're down to the state average, I think, of 14% or 15%. And all that money that was saved with the help of the Board of Finance to invest in their infrastructure because we hadn't gotten rid of it over the years, I guess, was what allowed us to invest in the, I think, the new reading program. I mean, it's been in the millions of dollars. And, you know, to survive on 1.4% on average, and the city, I think, received only 1.9%, but it's still 30%, 40% more, has been very difficult. But with the team that's in place and the board members, and it's been a constant, and I haven't been around as much as I should, it's been great teamwork. And I will say that I think the city has neglected what's the most important aspect of people wanting to come into this town. The first reason they come into a town is education. And it can be disputed, but it is the biggest reason why people come in. And the goal is, I think, to get us out of Alliance, to Mrs. Trav's comments. And I think, I don't know all the data, but I think we're on our way. And I don't think eight years ago, anybody thought we'd even be this close. I mean, there's a lot of teachers here. I think they'll agree. The atmosphere is better, camaraderie is better. The team is great. They're producing numbers that work. They're producing, without numbers, anybody could probably conceive of getting done with 1.4% a year, when you're giving 3% raises, which the teachers more than deserve, and the administrators and the parents. So my request is, you understand, you've kept it really low for about eight years that I've been on the board, 1.4% average, and I know the city's in a tough spot, but you don't invest in education, you lose the city. And you can find any other city in the state of Connecticut that cut education for a decade in real numbers, talking real numbers. Inflation between five years ago and today is 29%. I think we received an average of 7%, maybe 8%. So we're down, we're in a negative about 22% in real dollars. But you'll do the best you can, and hopefully you understand that we need, we need to catch up a little bit this year. So appreciate the mayor's efforts over the last 12 years. I wouldn't do it. You're crazy to do it for the money you get paid and put up with the aggravation. But that girl Deanna is wonderful, and she's going to do a great job for us. I don't know if Deanna's working for, even though Deanna's working for me, but Deanna Marshand. But anyway, thank you for sending her our way.
Thank you.
And thank you for your effort.
Thank you, Gary. All right, sticking to the list, Lori Noto.
Hi, I'm Dr. Lori Noto. I just want to give you a little background about myself. I'm actually an educator. I have a few concerns about the FAST program. Not so much the idea of it, but where we are right now. There's four months until the school year starts. It's not in operate, like, there's no principal, there's nobody looking to hire. It can't go together in four months. And the fact that it was started in 2023, the discussion, the work should have started in 2023. There should be a very clear plan of how this is going to come together. I'm not opposed to the idea of doing this. It's a great idea, but it needs to be done thoughtfully and very planfully. And if it's not done that way, I think there's going to be a lot of problems. So I have some very serious concerns about it. In addition, you can't use Alliance money to do this because Alliance money is going to go away. And then you're going to lose all your faculty if that's how you're paying for them. So that proposes another problem. That and the fact that our taxes are going up anyways because our houses all got reassessed. So I have a lot of concerns about how much money I'm going to be paying out in taxes. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Sticking to the list, I have Charles Vasallo.
Hi, my name is Charles Vasallo. I live on 114 John Brown Road here in Torrington. I got to be in my best behavior. I got to look for my wife. But I had a couple of questions regarding the end game for the Alternative Education Program. I know you probably want to make productive and respectful citizens out of these children that are in this program. But it seems to me like even the state just seems to throw money at things without understanding what the, what the real problem is, what the root causes of all these issues we have with these children and this alternative education. Has anybody really looked at that? Or are we just throwing money at it? That's one concern. And what happens next year? Glad you got the grant for this year, but what happens next year when there's no grants available? Are we as taxpayers, is this going to be another burden on us? And my last question is, I'd like to know, maybe I missed this. I'd like to know how much we spend in Torrington, the cost per student. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vasallo. Okay, this is where I go to the audience. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the board at this time? Yeah, if you could, again, if you're a resident of the city of Torrington? Good. Yes. State your name and address, please.
I am Aleve Vasallo, on 114 John Brown Road. And I just want to make one comment because you made the mention that one of the things people come into town for is the education. One of the things people don't come into a town for are taxes. And one of the things people leave is because of taxes. And I've been listening to the Torrington chatter on Facebook, and there are so many people that are so upset about, of course, the reevaluation, which doesn't really tell you what your taxes are going to be. It depends on the budget that you set. And I can't imagine what you guys go through in the school area because school today is nothing like school was when I was in school. And I don't understand why we have so many children way below efficiency levels in all our grades. And to my husband's point, do we understand why? And I look at the example in Hartford where everybody has to get passed. The girl graduated from Hartford High, gets accepted at UConn, and is suing them because she can't read and write. Those are the kinds of things that I don't understand, and goes to my husband's question of, what is the root problem of this? And do we just throw money at it? Or do we try to understand why our children are not progressing to the level they should?
That's it. Thank you very much. Thank you. Open still to the
Hi, everybody. My name is Kaitlyn Hall. I do live in Torrington. I live at 156 Country Club Road. I have a whole letter that I, excuse me, that I am going to read to you. And then just at the end, I just have an off-the-cuff statement that I want to make. But like I mentioned, I am a resident of Torrington. I've lived here for close to eight years. And I'm the mother of two school-aged children. I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of a large and growing number of concerned taxpayers regarding the Board of Ed's proposed budget increase. In reviewing this year's budget proposal, many areas of concern are to be found. The number one being the plan of the FAST Academy to make use of the existing Forbes building. From my recollection, when being presented with the proposal for the construction of the new high school and middle school campus, which I voted for with gusto. I was so excited to have the new high school and the new middle school. Mention was made of closing the Forbes building to offset some of the cost burden associated with that new construction. While I agree with the concept of this FAST Academy, and the concept is definitely reasonable and needed, the viability of continuing to keep Forbes open and staffed is also questionable. A lot of the budget line items have already been discussed. But going along with some of the line items that I went through individually, the perfect attendance incentive, where the district is offering this stipend, which we all know allows a $250 bonus to each teacher who doesn't call in sick at the end of each quarter. The financial report shows a line for this incentive, which has $0 budgeted. And according to the financial report presented at the April 15 Board of Finance meeting, this stipend has paid out $126,000 through March 31 of this year. It's also noted that this stipend is now reflected in other salaries for the new budget. And I'm not sure why that would have to be rolled into a generic line item. Relating to this as well, it looks like in the fiscal year '26 budget regarding substitutes, there's an increase of approximately $178,000 for this line item. I mean, I'm a mom. We all know life happens. Perfect attendance is not a possibility. But providing an incentive to not call into work, notwithstanding, if the district is paying for staff to be at work as expected, wouldn't this result in needing to pay less for substitute staff? Questions that I've now been thinking about? Has the Board investigated potential savings on snow plowing and removal and landscaping contracts, seeing that there will be one or maybe two less buildings the contractors will not be responsible for? Will the Board be prepaying expenses again this year, as stated that they did in the 2024 audit? How can taxpayers and those voting on a budget gain an accurate perspective of what it takes to educate our children when the district has historically spent down any kind of surplus in May and June of the previous fiscal year? How can the Board of Ed expect taxpayers, city council, and the Board of Finance to support a budget with so many questionable line items, some of which don't really seem to serve the children themselves? How can the Board of Ed expect the taxpayers, city council, and the Board of Finance to approve a budget that doesn't appear to reflect the new redistricting plan? Overall, the budget itself feels slapped together. And I'll take this as kind of a point of personal, however you say it. It's no secret that our public schools are awful. And when I say that I have two school-aged children, I do. And I made the decision directly not to send them to Torrington Public Schools. I admire the teachers and the support staff who work directly with our children every day. I really do. It's hard, and it's meaningful work. And I'm aware that teachers are being asked to do more with less and even taking on some financial burden on themselves, which I hate. This being said, like my neighbor over here identified, it seems like the Board of Ed continues to blame mounting issues on our schools on lack of increases in funding. And I'm concerned that we are continuing to throw good money after bad. Things are getting to be expensive. And like I said, I willingly and with gusto voted for the new high school and the middle school. But when does it end? And when do we start to really look and see the root cause of some of these problems instead of just asking for more money? I also want to note that as I stand here tonight, as a Torrington resident, I gladly pay my taxes. That's part of being an American. That's part of being a patriot. That's part of being a productive member of society, is paying the taxes that I owe. I just, I find it very hard to reconcile an overall budget increase like this that seems completely fiscally irresponsible. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Still to the public, okay.
Hi, my name is Kristen Conway. I am a member of the Board of Education, but I am also a City of Torrington resident, and I am a parent. I have two children in the school district, seventh and ninth grade, and they are thriving. Our schools are amazing. If anybody bothered to get off of social media and actually attend a school improvement meeting or a Board of Ed meeting, they would know that our scores are going up. And our staff is amazing, and they care deeply about our kids. We are throwing money at nothing. We are educating children. I am a proud parent of two Torrington Public School students. And they are thriving because our schools are amazing, our staff is amazing. And this Board of Education cares only about the kids. And we finally have a superintendent that we can put faith in. And we should be proud to be Torrington residents. And I'm sad at what I'm hearing. Very sad.
Thank you. We are still open to the public. I would ask that everybody refrain from applauding. I think it impedes other people's ability to speak freely. So I do, I do ask that we not do that. Anybody else from the public wishing to address the board? Because it's a public hearing, I have to call for it three times? So I'm going to Oh, Zoom room. Oh, sorry. Yes, because that was written in the notice. So to the to the members of our community that are participating via Zoom, is there anyone wishing to speak? Or I should read, I know. You're pointing the same thing? Yeah, so a lot of people coming in and leaving. So I'm going to, so there is a public question from Kathy Peterson. So I think this relates to the earlier meeting, not the public hearing. So let's stick to the public hearing questions. Public hearing questions from Bill Wintry. Can someone please bottom-line this for us? What impact will the proposed budget have on taxes? Will taxpayers see an increase in their property taxes? If so, how much? 1%, 5%, 20%? If I'm currently paying $10,000 in taxes, what am I going to be paying next year? So I'll take that. That is That is, tonight is just a discussion about the Board of Education's spending plans. That is, the operating expenditures, capital expenditures, and technology expenditures. The Board of Finance, over the next five weeks, will be reviewing those revenues in relation to the requests that have been presented, not just the Board of Education's, but the city's as well. And we'll be able to answer those questions as we get further along in budget review and revenue reviews. So I apologize, I can't answer that better, but... And that's it, that's all I see on the Zoom room. You got anything else? All right. All right, well then, let me call this three times. Is there anybody else from the public wishing to address the board at this time? Anybody from the public wishing to address the board regarding the Board of Education's operating capital facilities or capital technology? And final call, anyone from the public wishing to address the board with regard to the Board of Education's budgets? Seeing and hearing none, I'm going to call this three times, I will declare this public hearing closed. Declare the public hearing closed. Public hearing is closed. All right, thank you all very much.